Good evening. We'll call to order the Monday, October 7th, 2024, meeting of the North Andover Select Board. If everyone could rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is public comment. Per Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration, while deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to fifteen minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing done.
And you gave such a great speech.
I know, right? Oh, by the end, I'll have it memorized. All right, next item on our agenda, we actually have a recognition this evening. Kevin Foster, our middle school custodian, for some heroic efforts. I'm going to go up and maybe give us the overlay and we'll...
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. On September 6th, 2024, during sixth grade lunch, an eleven-year-old child was in the cafeteria with approximately two hundred of his fellow students. While eating, the child went to swallow a potato chip and it became lodged in his throat, obstructing his airway. The child began to panic, placing his hands on his neck, indicating that he was choking. At this time, Kevin Foster turned the corner into the cafeteria and recognized the critical situation that was unfolding. Kevin immediately jumped into action, grabbing the child, giving him abdominal thrusts in an attempt to dislodge the object that was stuck in the child's throat. After a few quick movements, the object became free and Trevor was able to breathe. We at the North Andover Fire Department would like to officially commend Kevin Foster for his immediate recognition and the severity of this situation. His immediate actions and effective abdominal thrusts most likely resulted in the saving of the life of the child.
Wow.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kevin. Mr. Foster. We also have a certificate of commendation for you, which I'll present here, presented to Kevin Foster for your exemplary actions on September 6th, 2024, at which time you administered the Heimlich maneuver for an eleven-year-old student choking during lunch. Your swift actions and quick thinking saved the life of the child and made a profound impact on the school community. The North Andover Select Board commends you for your lifesaving response in an effort in assisting a person in distress. Thank you on behalf of the Town of North Andover and its residents. Mr. Foster?
We're all in.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
The woman with the hat.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Fortune, the rest of the meeting is all downhill from here, right?
But we also, Mr. Chair, we'd also like to thank the Fire Department for acknowledging this great occasion. No, it's a life. It's just phenomenal.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now to the more mundane portion of the evening. Yeah, don't feel obligated to stay for the more mundane.
Unless you're tired, we can put you to sleep.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's always the fun stuff. Next up on our agenda is licensing. Can I all entertain a motion to go into licensing?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? We are in licensing.
Well, we have a public hearing. Is Tara Khan here? Hi, how are you?
Is it a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing. I'm sorry. So we have an application for you to, for a common vic license. Do you want to tell us about your business?
Yes, so I'm sure you guys have seen the Upper Crest Down Street. We're going to change it to Supreme House of Pizza. We have one in North Bellarica, which is very successful. The very famous thing we do is a gluten-free menu.
Oh, really good.
So that's been doing very good in North Bellarica. We have a location in Denver's, and this is going to be our third location. So trying to do our best we can.
Very happy to have a gluten-free menu.
I recommend the arugula pizza.
I never would have thought of arugula pizza.
Any other questions from the Board?
When will you take over or...?
We're just waiting for the licensing.
Are you waiting for us?
We better get to work.
Step on it. We're looking forward to trying it out.
Then I will take a motion. There's no further questions.
Ma'am Chair, I'll move the Select Board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from Tariq Khan of Khan's Ravioli Two Incorporated, doing business as Supreme House of Pizza for a common victor license at 162 Sutton Street.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to North Andover.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Best wishes.
Thank you.
Our next item is we have a...
You're welcome to go.
Yes, you don't have to stay. Thank you. We have a request from Catherine Kiesling for a one-day liquor license if you'd like to come up for your one-year anniversary.
Wow.
Which is very exciting.
I know, that was fast.
It's hard to believe. Yeah, if you could just tell us about the event.
Sure. So we're just celebrating our one-year anniversary with an evening event with hors d'oeuvres and a glass of wine. A ticketed event where each attendee gets a glass of wine and a small sparkling toast. It won't be champagne, because I'm cheap. It's a bookstore. And some hors d'oeuvres and snacks and so forth. So just looking to celebrate with our clients and customers and just have some social time with them as well. Offer a sale at the time.
And I saw in the application Marble Ridge is...
Marble Ridge is going to be there and doing the serving. So each person would get one and then they have the option to buy another through Marble Ridge. They'll have their toast machine there and everything. And it's a certification for the server and everything.
Yes, the applications are in order. We're very excited. So you're celebrating your one-year anniversary. Any questions?
Are we good on parking with all the construction going over there?
For now. For now, for an evening event, yes. It's getting a little crazy over there.
They are making progress.
Yeah, we lost electricity one day, we lost water another day, and another day. It's a little chaotic, but it'll be so awesome.
It's going to be great when it's done for you.
It'll be fantastic. And they're great landlords, so.
Good.
They've been doing it a long time.
They have.
Prior to that, it was a drive-in movie theater.
Yeah.
And I could watch the movies from my house. And they were all clean. Just couldn't hear anything. We did, literally. It's a long, long time. They've been there. You're right. They've been good corporate business for town.
Already stopped by when we were first opening and chatted with us for twenty-five minutes and drives like a beat-up Chevy. Super nice guy.
All right, then I'll take a motion.
I will move that the Select Board approve the request from Catherine Kiesling of Purple Culture Bookshop for a one-day wine and malt liquor license on October 19th, 2024, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. for a one-year anniversary celebration.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can't wait for the next ten or twenty or thirty.
It's going to be an annual event.
Thank you. Then I'll take a motion to close licensing.
So moved. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I know that Kate Kelly and the Veterans Director are in the audience. Would you be willing to take those items out of order so we can send them along?
Be happy to, if there's no objections.
None.
Yes.
So that's item D enough?
Okay, we'll flip a coin. All right, we'll go with item D first, if you don't mind. For Ms. Kelly?
So we're very excited to appoint Kate Kelly to the Planning Board as an associate member. Kate is with us in the audience. She has a very impressive resume, including having served on many boards and committees in the past, including a planning commission and a planning and zoning commission in other states. She has a long history of working in government, with her last position being the Executive Director of the Office of Firearms, Safety, and Violence in Washington Department of Commerce. So we're putting on the planning board, but we have lots of things that we want her to do moving forward. So we're very excited. We're very excited. It's going to be great, so thank you.
That's terrific. That's terrific. Say, anyone has any questions? All entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approve the Town Manager's appointment of Kate Kelly to the Planning Board as an associate member.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye. With our sincere thanks, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
And we will, with that, move to item F. Veteran Services. Still a bank?
Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board. So we're looking, we had initially planned on having the Veterans Day ceremony over at the middle school, which we've been advertising heavily. Due to construction, we've had to change that. And one of the reasons we were having it there was to highlight the new plaque that we had placed. I do have copies here. So we'll plan on next Veterans Day, having a rededication there and it'll be inside. But it, so the ceremony will be stripped down. Obviously, we had planned on doing this, so we've gone back to Plan B, which is the original ceremony, so we'll step off at first in Maine, 10 a.m. and have our ceremony Patriots Park. Our featured speaker is Command Sergeant Major Campbell, who is a North Andover grad. He's the highest-ranking NCO in the U.S., in the Guard. So in the Mass National Guard.
Very cool.
So we're keeping in that theme of having a local person come and speak. So looking forward to that, but everything else has kind of been stripped down from what we had planned initially.
Understood.
This looks great, though.
It does. Fantastic.
Could you tell me again where in the park it is that you're going to put it?
This is at the middle school.
Oh, this is the middle school. Sorry.
The plaque is at the middle school. It's outside of the Veterans Auditorium.
Okay.
And we had acquired funds, thanks to Melissa, to get that revamped. When I first started, it was a kind of a long-term goal, but we were able to get that done. Peter Rossi, who's amazing, did the, he really made the plaque come to life with what we had for funds, so it came out really nice. It's timeless and it'll be there for a long time.
We've had a lot of luck with earmarks for veterans projects, so we'll continue to move those along, but it's been two years of success with that, so thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
No, it's great.
Thank you, Joe.
But we do have something else going to the park. That's where I was getting confused at some point.
Yes, that's Jeff Clark, Commander of VFW, is leading the charge on that. And I believe he's looking at the 25th anniversary for 9/11. Obviously, we're supporting that and assisting him. Mass Fallen Heroes has already verbally agreed to help out with a large amount of the funding. But again, it's Jeff's show, just there to cheer him on and support him wherever I can, so.
Well, that's very kind of you.
And I had COVID for the fourth time, so I couldn't be here last time.
I've never gotten it.
Knock on wood.
Lost twelve pounds in two days.
Well, you look great.
Hope you're feeling better right now.
Yes. Been two weeks.
All right, I think it's pretty straightforward. Same parade we've done every other year otherwise, right?
Yes, it'll be the same. This would have been an outlier, obviously, having it there. It would have been a one-off. We traditionally try to stay outside for the ceremony, but yeah, so next Veterans Day, we'll look to have it. A new revamped auditorium.
It's the first day I wear my winter coat every year, because it's freezing on that day.
You never know what you're going to get.
So just tell everybody, dress warm for Veterans Day.
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approve the request of Veteran Services to use Main Street for the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th, 2024, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Continue to feel better.
Okay, moving back to the order of agenda, we have item A, a letter of support for 20 Brown Court, which I think everyone should have a copy. Has anyone had a chance to review that?
We do have two members of the Affordable Housing Trust here, so I'm sure one of them would love to fill us in. Look at the bullets they're drawing.
So just a little background. As you know, we have partnered with Bread and Roses Housing on several units, several affordable units in North Andover that are still affordable and still have wonderful tenants in them. So they recently merged with CAF, which is the Center for Assistance to Families. CAF actually has offices in Washington. They're a great nonprofit that doesn't just do housing, but they do a lot of assistance for lower-income families. They do like assistance with wills and estates and things like that, so it's a little bit different. But they do also do housing. So they are applying for a grant through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which we did this last year with Bread and Roses. It's a pretty big grant that they apply for every year to help build their housing. And one of the requirements is that they receive a letter of support from you guys and also the Affordable Housing Trust, which we'll be taking up tomorrow night.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself. I do have a relationship with that neighborhood.
Okay.
So just step away while you...
No, no questions. Thank you.
So is Bread and Roses still involved or is it...?
So they've officially merged. And now it's known as Center for Assistance to Families, but some of the staff at Bread and Roses is still involved. The previous executive director, she is helping them through the transition and will stay on with Brown Court. But it is now known as CAF.
Bread and Roses has been around for so long?
Yeah, it was, they looked for a while of a, for nonprofits that they could merge with. They needed a little more capacity.
No, I think it's a great project. When projected construction? Do we know?
Well, hopefully, they'll start this spring. They were encouraged to, they didn't get this grant last year, and so they were encouraged to apply for it again this year. I think there's just a small pool of money and they try to give a little bit each year, so.
The letter is coming from you. Is it okay?
Yeah, on behalf of the town.
I'll move that the Select Board sign the letter of support for 20 Brown Court.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor? Aye. One recusal? Okay. Great, thank you. Item B?
Going to hold off on item B, right? Until 8 p.m.?
I'm sorry, yes, we are. All right, item C. Yeah, we're going to run out of time. Item C, vote on our fiscal '26 goals.
Thank you. So I do go ahead and take the goals that we had discussed at your goal-setting meeting, put in the Select Board leads that we had agreed upon, assigned, working with our senior staff at the senior staff meeting, staff to each of the goals, and then making sure the deliverables were adequate, and then determining priority level. When I do the priority levels, what I typically do is I try to take anything that is public safety-oriented or that I think might have actual construction in the fiscal year and mark those as high. And then I take other things that I think we could actually achieve the entire deliverable and mark them as medium. And then things that are long-term, so like riverfront zoning, while I think that's a great goal, I know that's going to take us many years, and so I put that as low. The Review Committee bylaw and Select Board policies is a lower one. Explore possibility of municipal power, because that deliverable to share is just discussions and analysis that I put as low. Obviously, we are happy to change any of these, but that's how I had prioritized them originally. And then we'll report back, I think we did it quarterly this year, on status as these go along. You'll get a report from the different staff members that have been assigned.
Yeah, and again, to the priority point, it could be a seventeen-way tie for first place, but everything's high priority, then nothing's high priority, right? So you have to kind of make some adjustments as to how we approach those things, so.
And that's why the deliverables are really important, too, because if the goal is too big or if everything's high priority, it becomes overwhelming for the staff that it's being assigned to. And so sometimes it results in a little bit of analysis paralysis, which we like to avoid. So we try to really make everything manageable, but it allows them to figure out, I should work on this first, because we want to kick this off and then move to the other items throughout the year.
Seems consistent with what we talked about our last meeting.
Yeah, it was a great process to go through.
Great robust discussions, so. All right.
I'll move approval.
I have a motion.
The fiscal year '26 goals.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, item E, add election workers as special municipal employees.
So you all remember that special municipal employees are just employees who can be paid from two different departments. We would like to add election markers, because we do have an interest in employees that perhaps work at the library or as noon attendants or as crossing guards, who would be really wonderful election markers as well. So we wanted to add that this year, so that we could continue to kind of use that pool in different ways.
Seems to make sense.
We did a really good look through this list, probably in 2021-ish, around then, and deleted and added a lot of people at that point, so this is a pretty good moving list right now.
It's a good reminder that everyone on our committees and commissions is, in some way, an employee of the town.
I think this was very good, because prior to that, they couldn't do it.
Yes, they couldn't, and so this was...
And these are really good citizens. They know a lot of people. They know, you know, if something doesn't seem right. I think it's great that we made that happen.
I agree.
I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approve election workers as special municipal employees.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Okay, next up, item G, the Town Manager Evaluation. So I guess I'll kick this off here. As, you know, the last few weeks, everyone submitted their comments on the evaluation, which was presented to the Town Manager last week. We had an opportunity to sit and discuss today. And, you know, give everyone else a chance to kind of chime in if they'd like, but I'd like to start by saying what a pleasure you are to work with. In what was, if there's a more challenging year, I can't imagine it right now, right?
It's not over yet.
Right, we, during that period, you know, battling within, not even a full year, within four or five months, right, a catastrophic natural disaster, a challenging First Amendment issue, and a budget items. You kind of got the Holy Trinity of challenges in one year and came through it with flying colors. And I know we all know and understand the work that you and your team, this is a team discussion, put into all of this. We know not everybody sees it, except when you're really impacted, right? So, you know, as I think we communicated to, we really appreciate that and I think you did a tremendous job going through that, so. That'll turn it out to the rest of the Board. Would like to have any other additional comments?
Who's coming first?
I guess just to jump off what Brian said, it was a, what word, do we keep using unprecedented? Everything was unprecedented. Like you said, from the floods to the First Amendment to the schools. And your swift action and your collaboration with the schools was amazing, because we couldn't have gotten through the end of the fiscal year, not in a deficit, without the work that you put in, because it wasn't anything that any of us expected at all. And the fact that we were able to come out the other side of it is nothing short of amazing. And your team that you have built, I think I say it a lot, you have really surrounded yourself with a great team and it shows, especially in those times of crisis. So I appreciate you. I appreciate your team. You guys are all wonderful to work with. And I think we could keep moving forward and some great things in the future in the pipeline with, you know, the schools being a priority, the fields being a priority, public safety, paving, all those things, and I look forward to continuing working with you.
Ditto? How's that? No. Usually I write things out, but I thought, I can do this. Like, how many different ways can you say the same things every year, which is that you are a remarkable asset to this town and this community, to this board. You know, and again, the team is a huge part of that. You've taken time and care to put people in positions where they can capitalize on their talents and do great things for our community. We couldn't ask for more than that. Again, I mean, you will, there's nothing you won't do, which I so completely appreciate, as I would say someone who's similar to... You know, and it really makes a difference. You lead by example. You are open to talking to anyone who needs to sit and hash something out. You make time for everybody. I just, I could go on and on. We are very appreciative. It has been a hard year. I would, I hope that we don't have to go through that again. But knowing that there was swift response and an incredible team effort on every front to handle every challenge that came up was just, I don't know, you guys work really hard. It makes everything seem easy and we know it is not. And we appreciate that more than you are told on a daily basis. So thank you for all that you do and we definitely look forward to continuing on this path.
Question?
I'll follow with, agree with what they're saying, but you are definitely someone who always treats everybody who comes in here, whether they're angry or upset or whatever, with respect and dignity, and I think that's huge. And you're very talented with that. You're also very talented in noticing where our employees or others excel and give them the kudos that they deserve. And often, it's publicly, which is wonderful. Everybody likes to be thanked and acknowledged and you do do that on a regular basis. The one thing that I did put in that's a little bit different, but it's not because of you, but we are in tough financial times right now. You know, the town did have to, and good for you for doing this. The kids are important, but we adjusted the budget so that our kids would be okay with their programs and the teachers and so forth and so on. And you just dug in with the staff, our staff on the town side. And just so people know, it's close to seventy percent of the budget is for the schools when you include their benefits and everything. So our portion is rather small, but you made it work, which ties into my next comment. We, the whole country's in financial difficulties right now, for the most part. We need to just sort of, and we know how to do it. We've done it many times in the past. Just buckle down, look for every dime, every nickel, to keep everything running smoothly. It's a challenge, but I really think that you're up for the job, so you've done it before. Just a different, you know, just a different avenue that we've been quite fortunate the last few years with the new buildings and the Amazon and all kinds of wonderful things like that. But we have to keep our eye on the financial ball, and I know you will, and I put that in there. No, not those words, but you'll do it and the staff will help you. And, you know, we just, we need to be respectful of the taxpayers, because they're hurting. No, you do a great job and you're very respectful of anybody who comes into this building or calls you. or calls you, and that's hugely important. Now, thank you.
As the newest select board member, I just can't thank you enough for how supportive and encouraging you've been, getting, you know, getting a new select board member up and running. And there's a lot going on in town, and it could be overwhelming. But, you know, you and your staff, and, you know, everyone involved in the town, has just, has made it, you know, as easy, you know, and non-boring as possible. So I very much appreciate that. What I've seen, you know, just again and again and again, is how great you are at communication, you know, at working, again, working with staff, working with volunteers and boards, at meeting people where they are. For us, for volunteers, staff, and the residents, and, you know, really going above and beyond to, you know, make sure every voice is heard, and that, you know, and that people feel like they're getting as much thing for their buck for, as far as their very well-earned tax, you know, taxes are concerned. And I'm just, we're so lucky to have you and your wonderful staff, and look forward to next year.
And I'll just say thank you. I know I say it every year, but I've got one hundred and sixty-one people who show up every day and do an amazing job, not including all of our amazing volunteers. So without them, I don't know how we function. Well, it has been a hard year, and I said to the chair earlier that I may need to have some hair dye in my next contract. It's allowed us all to grow, become closer, and really become stronger as an administration. So I appreciate them so very much, and I appreciate all of you. So thank you.
Great. We can go on and on, if we need to, to get back to item B. I guess we will move on to consent items.
We have to.
Oh, we have to accept the evaluation?
So we can post on the internet.
Got it, okay. Well, I will take a motion.
I'll move that the select board approve the town manager evaluation for her performance from September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, through September first, twenty-twenty-four.
That is. Should have been September fifteenth.
Yeah, okay, September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Thought we were trying to, I thought we were changing the cycle. I was like, okay. Whatever you say.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think we're all happily ready to vote on this. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Did we do the ARP application?
No, so Mr. Nugent, who is going to be presenting that, is running a little bit behind. So we're taking things out of order and stalling.
I'm starting to talk really slow.
I'm gonna do a little tap dance in a second, so we can buy some time. All right, so we're gonna talk about every consent item individually.
Tried to explain the application. I just didn't know if there'd be additional questions beyond what Laurie and I would be able to explain to the best of our abilities.
Why don't we go through the rest of the agenda, give them some more time? I think there is gonna be some discussions, some questions.
Stan can run out the clock for.
Well, we do have three consent items. Donations from a handful of folks for the employee appreciation lunch, the donation for the friends of the library, and a donation, actually, two donations for the library. Friends and the board of trustees, okay, are the two different donations. So items A, B, and C, I think everyone's seen them there. I will take a motion on the consent items. So moved?
Second.
All right, all is in favor?
Aye.
All right, with our letters of thanks. All right, approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review our last minutes from September twenty-third?
Yes.
Any comments? Do you want to go line by line?
I think she did a great job.
So they're thorough.
And that was a complicated, yes.
That's right, so yeah, two sets of minutes will prove together, yeah, from the two meetings.
Was that a surprise, like a bonus that she got to watch the meetings?
Thankfully, I see only one vote recorded in here, okay, for the appointment. We've got the final vote on there. I had nothing else on here, so I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes from the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
It's approved, okay. A select board updates. Here's where we can really run out the clock.
Farmers market.
Farmers market's over.
Congratulations.
Got to sleep late on Sundays now.
What was the final count on weather for the farmers market?
It was the first season in the last couple of years where we haven't had to cancel at least one or two markets. Yeah, but not, so it was hotter the previous year. We had weeks of hot weather this year, but last year, we had some Sundays that were going to be over a hundred degrees, and we had to cancel. We were lucky. We made it through every week. We had some great helpers, and we are always very appreciative of that. So, let's see, what else are we talking about? Who's going next? I'll think of something else.
I can say it was in your, it's in your tax bill, the newsletter, that we are doing wreaths again. They're a hundred dollars, and most people find out by their tax bill, but some people are renters, so they're not getting the property tax bill. So we are starting that, and you can just send it to the Holiday Decorating Committee. And the address is sixty-five Green Street, here in town, so.
Is there any way for people to go online and sign up to get it?
Not that I'm aware of. I suppose we could try to put that in on the website for people who are renters, or, and not property owners right now. Maybe someday they will be, right? The two realtors.
The realtors are all in favor.
We can certainly add that.
Google Sheet her.
Yeah, I mean, the only hiccup would be that if they paid with a credit card, they would have a processing fee.
They'd have to pay the fee, but that's okay.
But if not, they could bring a check or cash, but we certainly could set up a Google form, and we could have it populate right into, people could write their message, and it could populate to your spreadsheet.
Okay.
Be easy. I can do it tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, that would be good, because we didn't have room in the newsletter. It usually was an application form, but we had a lot of news, I guess. So the big thing is, please write legibly, because if I need to get in touch with you, and I can't read what it's saying, or the numbers or whatever, I gotta go on a hunt, and start hunting where that, I might find it, so. But, yeah.
And these are around the common and up and down Main Street, right?
It's a generous expression of around the common, because it goes around the common, goes up towards the fire station, and then it goes down towards the superintendent's office. Because every year, people will be like, oh, I missed my chance. So of course, I go in and start finding something, but.
What's the question? Is there a limit to how many we can do?
Yeah, what's the total?
It's about a hundred.
About a hundred, okay.
Approximately. I actually have to put a call into DPW to say, did we lose any poles this year, for whatever reason. Sometimes we lose a pole. We lost one at the old center.
That makes sense, yeah.
So that we don't sell one, that we don't have a spot for.
But we have about a hundred poles.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about, it's about that. So it's the old center, and then it goes down to the superintendent's office. Some of those poles, it is the High Street area, which includes the Water Street, and East Water Street portion of it, but it's High Street, and then it's Main Street, both sides.
Right downtown, yeah.
Right downtown. And it's funny, everybody has a different favorite location, you know? But they do sell out fast, so. I've already got, I think it's twenty-eight. Like, I got a, duh.
Just from the tax bill notice.
Yeah. Well, some people. A lot of people have grown to learn that, send it in around October first.
And how many years is this?
It's over thirty. But I'm getting a little tired.
And we started to see they're looking for local businesses for the Santa Parade, and people to participate, and that got posted yesterday or today.
Yes, we'll be voting on that on your next agenda, so that, the tree lighting.
Coming fast.
It is coming really fast.
Summer's over.
Summer is over.
Right, we leapt right through fall.
Into the holidays. Oh, when's Halloween? Do we need to do that?
Halloween's on Halloween.
Oh, gosh.
We definitely.
Halloween in North Yodomer.
Five-thirty to seven-thirty. Chief has sent me a letter.
That's great.
Oh, I just want to say, the DPW has done so much work this summer. It's, you're starting to see all the paving that they've done. I know last year, they got hung up with the rain and the weather, but the intersection at Waverly First and Maple is so, I don't want to say life-changing, but you can actually see.
I drove through today.
You can actually see, you know, with people coming and going. So I know they're wrapping up the hydro seeding, and people's lawns and stuff like that, but it really looks nice.
I will tell you, I saw a flock of black crows, probably eating something on the grass.
I'm sure.
I'm sure.
They take a few tries to get some grass seed growing, but. I don't know how Mr. Logan does it, but he, like, popped up.
He has the fencing up, yeah. Temporary, temporary strings.
It really is nice when you hit one of those roads that's been paved.
And it's good for DPW, after having a backlog of being able to get caught up and everything else, you know, from the unfortunate freeze, so.
And it really does look pretty. I mean, when you just see the fresh pavement in the neighborhoods, it really, it just looks great.
And more sidewalks, really improving pedestrian safety and everything else. Both improved sidewalks and added sidewalks.
We want people to want to walk around it.
And we're about to install a few at some school crosswalks, as well as, I believe, in front of Town Hall, of the solar-powered, we call them RFB's, but, you know, the walk signal. So the actual equipment came in today, but the poles, there's been poles. So as soon as they come in, we'll be installing those.
That's nice.
So is this the one that beeps?
This is the one where you press it, and it turns on after you press it, and you can cross with the yellow flash.
It's like, there's one at the middle.
The beeping one is for people who have vision problems.
I'm assuming this one probably does beep.
Yeah, I think they all, at this point, they all beep.
That's scary.
But they're doing them at a lot of the school.
Right, like.
At Atkinson.
We do, I think.
And I think Atkinson over there.
And the state put that one in at our petition, yeah. So we're excited to be rolling those up. We see those.
We are very excited about that as well.
Okay, no other select board updates? Town manager report.
Sure. So just a reminder that we do have our flu clinics going on. Laurie and I got our flu shot from the nurse this week, so all the cool kids are doing it. Dee had already gotten hers. So we do have our family flu clinic, which is October twenty-second. Every single Wednesday from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty, adults can come and get their flu shot at the senior center, so we are encouraging people to do that. Hazardous waste day, actually, the date has changed to October twelfth. So if you have hazardous waste, you're gonna want to be looking out for the October twelfth notice. That's the day that you can bring paint and other items that you have to DPW to throw them away. October fifteenth, KP Law is attending the planning board meeting to discuss the new accessory dwelling unit, general law. So that was passed at the state level, does go into effect this winter. And KP has been doing a series of webinars, and we thought it would be really great to have them in front of our planning boards, that people could hear what they're advising, and answer questions that they may have. So they'll be here October fifteenth, which is soon and going to be good.
Has to be recorded, right?
It'll be recorded, yes. Election Day is Tuesday, November fifth. The last day to register is October twenty-sixth. We have listed all of our early voting on our website. There are two Saturdays, so that's important. We are continuing to work with the schools on their budget. At their last meeting, they did project between a five-hundred thousand to one-point-five million dollar deficit. We'll have a lot more information in November, because that's really when they'll have a good, solid, full month of schools' bills in. So it's a little bit of, it's a little bit difficult to track right now. But Dennis and Kyle, every day, are running their encumbrances in any known assumptions, and we're monitoring it. We're meeting Thursday again with them. You know, our advice right now is to cut where we can, so they will be doing that, and they do have soft freezes on, and are doing all of the right things. So I'm very happy to have the superintendent as a partner in this, and she's really doing everything she can to monitor the situation as well. And we will continue to do that with her.
She was here this evening.
She was, yeah.
Is there any update on the hiring of a business manager?
They're interviewing now.
They are.
Yeah. I want to congratulate our unsung hero. First time we ever gave that award. It's somebody who is in the background as a town employee, who really doesn't get maybe all the recognition all the time, but keeps things running smoothly, and that was Bernadette Kern from our planning department. And if you don't know, over the last two years, Bernadette has also taken over as the facilities admin, and has been doing all of Steve Foster's POs, and keeping him organized with all of his appointments. And probably should have got her a cape instead of a scarf. Because she's amazing. So we, she was not amused. She's not excited about getting the award.
That's why she's unsung.
That's why it is the way it is. And then our employee of the year was Crystal Clooney, who is our community support coordinator, as you all know. She does amazing things. On the day that the employee nominated, so what happens is employees nominate to us, and then we pick from that. She actually had responded on her day off, which was, it was a Saturday, to a fire where people were displaced, and they sent me a picture of her kind of on the sidewalk, still with like her bags from the grocery store, aiding this person. And so we all appreciate so much the work that she does. And we're very thankful to all the employees who came to our employee appreciation lunch. I think we had about a hundred and fifty, which was amazing. We were so excited to be able to celebrate all of them, and as you know, we had a lot of organizations and businesses who contributed, and we will send them all a letter of thanks as well. And then the only other updates that we have is the McAvoy work is completed, and the pickleball courts are opening this week, correct? Very soon. We're just making sure everything's good. We are, the high school track project has started, and it would be amazing if everyone would not walk on it. It would make our lives a lot easier. We've tried a lot of things, signs, police cars, and it just doesn't seem, yeah, barricades. But the problem is, if people walk on it after we put the overlay, our million-dollar expenditure is going to be ruined. So we're asking people to please stay off of it until it cures as well, and we will continue to put.
What is the timeline on that?
We don't know, do we?
Twenty-one days.
There's twenty-one days to cure?
From when?
This week.
Okay. Just because, so we can.
About cameras.
This may, we, people, it's amazing.
They took part of the gate down.
Okay.
Oh, did you get the equipment in?
But there's all caution tape. There's also signs and trucks blocking.
Oh, I totally, I know. I've seen it. I'm just surprised that people are going around it.
It's like a parkour situation.
It is very surprising.
Yes.
What happens if it rains?
The rain will not bother it. Yeah, the rain's okay. It's just the actual stepping.
Well, let's hope for rain.
Or put people putting in.
It will no longer be level and beautiful and.
Yes, and so.
Fast. We need it to be fast for those kids to.
I know the athletic director has shared our frustrations, and shares this message with us, right? Please stay off of it until it's done. And we're just beginning the fiscal year twenty-sixth capital process. Departments are just beginning to enter their requests, and we're looking forward to bringing that to you in January.
Excellent. Good stall job. All right, we'll go back to item B, and under new business regarding ARP application for repairs to the high school baseball field in the school field. I have the athletic director joining us. Thank you. I know you're pulling double duty. Other meetings are running long, so we worked it out.
Thank you, guys.
Mind giving us a kind of an overview of the request?
Yeah, so real quick on the track, so I think we need to say track and turf, because what's been the most frequently used part of the facility has been the turf, whether it's flag football, things like that. So people walking across the track to get to the turf has been an issue. So the whole facility is locked, should be locked down, you know, it's one of those things. But, and when it rains, they can't work. So today, they were not at the project at all, so that, but it does not disturb what they've already done, so.
All goes according to plan. It's open for the spring season.
Yes, it's supposed to be done, you know, October thirty-first, I think, is the, hopefully, the release date, so back to us.
I think what we need to do is, is get the help of one of our neighbors who will string it all up like he did with the sidewalks. With his new grass.
So thank you, guys, for having me, and I'm sorry that I'm running late. The ARP, so we looked at our baseball field, and, you know, the number-one priority for us has been, you know, to provide, you know, not just a facility, but facilities that are safe, both for our kids and the kids who come and play on them from other towns. And also, you know, my goal, obviously, is that also not just have that as the bare minimum, but to have the facilities be the envy of anyone who comes to our town. So the baseball field has been a source of dire need for many years. And so the, although there's some potential work. So the baseball field has been a source of dire need for, for many years. And so the, although there's some potential work that would be done on that facility, we still have at least one season, if not multiple seasons, until we get the work done there. So right now, if we were to play baseball there, it's, it's not a safe place. So the, the request was for an additional X amount square footage of clay as well as to redo the infield. The, the request is right around $8,000. You know, and it would solidify the infield and the safety hazards that we've identified for this upcoming spring season.
Okay. By having coached on that field, I can definitely share the sentiments of both it's, it's tough to have a visitor there, but also just the playability of it is, is a disaster. So I'll open it up to the rest of the board for, for some questions if, if no one else has any. So it's $7,800 for the clay and then $3,000 and change for the infield grass. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Only for the high school?
That high school field, yeah. I, I'm not a base.
So the middle school portion, Rick Gorman couldn't make it tonight. It's not gonna be done till the spring. If you wanna push that off, if you have questions that we can't answer, he'll be at the next meeting. But with ARP, we do have to encumber it by the end of the year, which is why the request is in.
What is the timeline for the overall, I mean, that, that field is one of the priority fields on the Fields Master Plan. So what's the timeline? Just curious.
For the high school.
For the high school baseball field.
We're doing the design right now. We'd like to take at least phase one to next town meeting, depending on what the cost estimates look like.
It's that phase one, the baseball?
Yes, it should be.
It should be, yeah. It's, we've changed it up a little bit, given that we added the tennis courts in and the track was originally part of it, but that we will do separately. So the phases are kind of.
A little different. That's okay.
Scrambled a little, but we'll know more when we get the estimate.
We've even talked about the possibility of being able to do phase one and two together because the turf, because the track is now out. So it'll be interesting to see how it comes in.
My only, yeah, my only thought about the middle school is I, would be nice to know if there is a plan for that before, you know, another plan for that. But the high school, those fields are practically not usable, so.
The middle school request, I believe, is just to get them through next year. I mean, obviously it's part of the replex.
Filling divots.
Filling, yeah, basically. People ankles and, yes, absolutely.
Very good. We need to have a big polo party if we need to fill a divot.
So, and I'm excited for the high school fields to be done, but I know that we need to take care of what we've got in the meantime. So I'm excited to see this come forward. Is the geese management part of that too?
So technically, it's not part of this price point or, or things we're discussing tonight. However, you know, we've tried a lot of different things already. You know, there was the, the flashing lights that had, you know, no rescue by them and we bought them and they didn't work, so we got to return them within a year. I was literally on the phone with a gentleman who does the Renaissance Golf Course the other night and trying to find, he uses dogs as well as some baiting or not, not, they're not killing them, but they're doing something with the nesting so that they go other places. So it's a process. What he did tell me was that, you know, really holding off on doing anything until the spring, when we get closer to when we really use that field for baseball and, and the track throws javelin and discus in that area, who wants to take care of our throwers. So it, so right now, it's not on the immediate front burner, but it's definitely something we'll be in discussions with and trying to find the best alternative.
I was happy to see it, cause I think I sent Melissa a picture this summer. I dropped Colton off at the high school and I was like, there's like 60 geese out there. It's so.
We've literally had scattered balls in the right field.
During games. I mean, it's, during when people are throwing javelins and discs, they're, they're stay, they're very gutsy creatures.
And the Tribune picked it up too.
Get enough food that they're happy to be, there's enough food lying around for them, but they don't wanna go anywhere.
Do any of the, the future designs, we have a little bit of far field here, contemplate realigning the field so that we're not losing 16 balls a game in the wetlands and?
Yeah, so I think, well, we haven't really seen any final design. I think one of the things that I'm hoping for is that they're able to do a baseball and softball outline with, with having a turf field out there or, or a grass field, whatever the price point is. I think the, that's the number one priority, is making sure that we take care of both those teams, the, both genders. But to, to your point, I mean, we're talking about whether it's losing them in the marsh or losing them to parking lots, kinda like we did at McAvoy with all the windshields. So it's, you know, we're really trying to figure out, it's a very small little postage stamp, but I, we're just trying to make the geometry work. So I'm really hoping and praying that Gail comes back with a creative solution. We've, we've shared all that with them, so we're hoping that that's gonna be something that's able to do.
So I, I noticed the original, the initial proposal in there for the grass, for the fielding, sorry, for the reseeding of the infield is like from June. Do you still have time to get seed to take before the winter?
Yeah.
Don't wanna throw money at it and have it not work, right?
So yes is the short answer. That's why, you know, timing and I really appreciate the opportunity to bring it forward to tonight. So thank you to Laurie and everyone else who made that happen. Really, the window, the further we go, the window is closing. So ideally, if we're able to gain approval for this, we're, you know, we're hoping to have that company out here, you know, as soon as they're available, which could be at the end of this week, beginning of next week. We've just, you know, we're really just hoping to close that and make sure it happens.
So Downer is able to do, like they're able to take this on.
This is what we were told and, you know, the, really November 1st is that magic, you know, number. It could be a, but it's really, everything should be done by November 1st.
Melissa, my only question is, I know when we were going through all our budget stuff, we cut back on a lot of ARP projects. So is this just a redistribution of, we were able to find some additional funding?
We have some funds available. We've had some debate into how much it is, but it's about, it was about a hundred thousand dollars. So we have this for, this going in and then we were having an additional conversation about purchasing some traffic enforcement materials. So you'll be seeing an application for that as well.
I think that's great. I think we gotta keep, take care of what we got and look to the future and get better fields. But in the middle school, I know the kids, it's not, it'll help to regrade up there a little bit.
We have irrigation there, right?
Middle school? No.
At the high school?
Only in the infield.
Only in the infield, okay. Alright.
That'll help too.
Okay. Yeah, this is all my questions. Do, does anyone have any questions regarding the middle school fields that they would like to hear from Rick Gorman on? Alright, in that case, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that we approve repairs to, the total, what is the total amount of $7,800 for high school baseball field repairs? And also $21,187.02 for middle school field repairs.
It also needs to include the infield lawn, I think.
Oh, that's not to, sorry. And also $3,725.38 for the infield lawn, sorry.
Alright, a motion, yep, a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
I have one more question.
Yes.
The middle school repairs to the field, is like soccer gonna lose that for the season?
No. The repairs that they're recommending are relatively benign. It's really, to me, and Laurie correct me if I'm wrong, but to me, it seemed like they were planning on bringing Lumen and kind of regrading and just trying to get it through another season because of the number of uneven grounds. Yes. So we definitely noticed it when we were at National Night Out. There was quite a few. Between that and the crabgrass from not getting any rain, it's a really difficult situation. So we think this will be a good way to get us through in the next season.
That's why the, the cross country is, uses that, that, that middle school field too?
They do.
They do, they do run back there, yes. So the middle school work will also happen now?
The middle school work, they are saying will happen closer to the spring.
That's right, okay.
That is, that is what.
So I'm just thinking about soccer. Soccer's in the spring.
So that's up to $21,000 and change that we'll have to encumber this year.
Yes.
Yeah, they're gonna have to follow the plan and get.
Thank you. Okay. And then hopefully get us through another year. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
We've literally done everything.
Our next meeting date is Monday, October 21st, 2024. Stan, mark your calendar. And I will take a final motion.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.